Good evening. Calling to order the regular meeting of the Placerville Planning Commission for Tuesday, October 1st, 2024. Would you all please join me in reciting the Pledge of Allegiance? Ms. Hunter, please call the roll.
Vice Chair Carter.
Here.
Commissioner Friend.
Here.
Chair Keeney.
Here.
Commissioner Lepper.
Here.
Commissioner Smith.
Here.
Okay. Good to see you all here. Next up is a closed session report, which we have no report. And then on to the adoption of the agenda. I'd like to, I would entertain a motion to adopt the agenda.
Motion to adopt.
Thank you.
I will second.
A motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Okay. Thank you very much. And moving on is the consent calendar, which includes our minutes of our September 17th, 2024 meeting.
I'd like to pull the, pull the minutes.
Okay, we have.
Or a question, at least.
Question from Commissioner Friend. All right. So then, having done that, we'll move on to number six. Since we pulled the minutes, let's discuss the question that you had.
Yeah, my question is, because we reordered the agenda at the last meeting, I was just wondering, and I just don't know the answer, should not the minutes reflect the order in which we took the items? Because we didn't take, we didn't take the items in the order as presented in the minutes because we reordered the agenda.
Staff will double check on that, but my read, or at least my understanding, is when looking at the council minutes, and sometimes they move stuff around, it doesn't.
You still just deal with it in accordance with how the agenda, with the published agenda? I didn't know the answer.
Yeah. No, that's a good question, and we'll confirm.
All right. In all my years, I just don't recall that coming up.
All right.
Move to approve the minutes.
Any other, any other discussion about the minutes from our last meeting?
A motion to approve.
Thank you, Mr. Friend.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Okay. Number eight is, oh, actually, number seven is items of interest to the public.
Chair Keeney, if I may, staff just wants to point out that I still, we still believe that Commissioner Smith is either not hearing or not voting. I want to make sure that, that he's voting when he wants to vote. Because we, we showed him is not voting on approval of the minute.
Oh, so the microphone, so the microphone needs to be on so it's recorded.
Approved.
We have, so it is unanimous. So now, number seven, items of interest to the public and public comment on non-agenda items. This portion is reserved for persons wishing to address the commission on any matter not on the agenda, and the subject matter is within the jurisdiction of the planning commission. Would anyone in the audience care to address the planning commission on something that is not on the agenda? I believe you're here for an agenda item. Okay. Sorry to startle you, I apologize.
It's tricking me.
Okay. Okay. Number eight is written communications on non-agenda items. Ms. Hunter, we didn't have any written communications?
We have none.
None, okay. So we've taken care of that, and we do not have any workshops or presentations this week? Okay. Good. We'll move on to 10, which is the environmental assessments and public hearings. 10.1 is the site plan review, 85-4-R, master sign plan amendment. And I'll turn this over to you, Ms. Hunter, for the staff report.
Thank you. So planning commission approval is required for applications seeking to modify an existing master sign plan. For some background, the subject commercial building was constructed in the late 1980s following planning commission approval of SPR 85-04 in 1985. And the first iteration of the master sign plan for the commercial building was approved in 1987 and included individual white, plastic block letters at a ratio of one square foot of sign area per one lineal business frontage. The sign area, or the sign plan for the center has been modified multiple times since its first approval. Staff has summarized these modifications in table one of the staff report. The primary reason for each amendment was the lack of creativity and inflexibility of the original sign plan. The current master, oh, yeah, the current master sign plan for the center is outlined on pages five and six of the staff report on table two, and can be found in attachments five and six of the staff report. As described in the staff report, the subject request is to permit the as-built placement of two 42-square-foot internally illuminated sign cabinets installed without a building permit and review of, of conformance with the master sign plan. The unit occupied by Mountain Mail and Minuteman Press was previously occupied by the Dignity Dragon, a Chinese restaurant. Based on staff's research, the restaurant vacated the parcel between April 2018 and March of 2019, and the new tenant moved into the unit and placed the subject signage sometime between 2019 and 2020. It should be noted that while master sign plans are a requirement of the city for commercial buildings or centers with more than two tenants, they are intended to be enforced and upheld by the property owner. Unfortunately, if the property owner does not actively ensure tenant compliance with the approved sign plan, allowing tenants to place signs that deviate from the approved plan without seeking an amendment, the city is placed in a position to require compliance and in a position of managing the commercial center. Ideally, a master sign plan amendment should be done such that all tenants would benefit from the modification. However, this application is specific to the unit occupied by Minuteman Press and Mountain Mail. Staff attempted to coordinate the amendment with the property management, but following limited communication and failure of the property management company to comply with deadlines, staff moved forward with the original application. Regarding the proposed as-built signs, the proposed signs are internally illuminated sign cabinets, 42 square feet each, that jointly span 28 lineal feet, approximately 41% of the unit's frontage. Additionally, the proposed signs exceed the currently allowed sign height and are located along the easternmost facade of the unit, near the entrance, rather than centrally located on the unit. The subject unit is occupied by Mountain Mail and Minuteman Press, two independent businesses under the same ownership, located within the same commercial space. As such, it is the opinion of staff that the use of two signs is appropriate to provide adequate advertising for each business. Staff's recommended amendments. Overall, it is the opinion of staff that granting of the proposed amendment would not be detrimental to the commercial center and would comply with the intent of the general plan and sign regulation ordinance. The proposed amendment provides additional variety to the building's elevation. The signs are of professional quality and provide advertising for both Minuteman Press and Mountain Mail. However, staff proposes the following amendments to the proposed. One, that the signs be moved such that they are centered on the front of the building. There's a figure in the staff report that illustrates staff's recommendation. And two, that the proposed signs are noticeably different from the existing approved signage on the building, and a condition of approval should be added that the property owner or manager is responsible for obtaining or an amendment to the remainder of the commercial property to create a uniform plan for signage on the building. And this condition of approval is included in the memorandum provided to the commission prior to the meeting. Based on staff's analysis, there are three alternatives for the planning commission. One, to approve the request as proposed and amended by staff, including staff's recommended outlines, recommendations outlined in the staff report and memorandum distributed prior to the meeting. Two, to approve the request as proposed by the applicant without staff's recommendations, or to deny the request as proposed and amended by staff and provide direction to staff for the additional required information or amendments needed for the application. The staff report includes staff's recommended action, option one, to approve the request as amended by staff. This would entail, one, adopting the staff report as part of the public record, two, making the findings in support of the site plan review request, including those findings outlined in staff's memorandum dated October 1, 2024, and conditionally approve SPR 25-04-R based on the information and analysis included in staff's report and subject to the conditions of approval in attachment one and the memorandum. This concludes staff's report. We're happy to answer any questions.
Thank you very much. First, I want to convey my sympathies. Reading the staff report, I realize, as you stated, that the city has now been placed in the position of enforcing a sign plan and essentially managing this property. And in reading that, I, you know, thank you for this extra effort. And honestly, I was just a little disappointed in the property owner and their management company that they aren't more cooperative with the city. However, I also, at this point, wanted to say that I've done a small amount of business with Minuteman Press and Mountain Mail, and I've found that the business owner to be, you know, an upstanding citizen, a hardworking individual, and so, you know, I thank him for establishing, you know, a well-run business in our community. I did have one question about the staff report. That's right. We included in attachment one, not just our recommended conditions of approval for what's before us tonight, but also the previous conditions that were with the site plan review 85-4 from 1995 and site plan review 85-04, 1985, original approval. And there's a total of nine conditions listed there. Have all nine of those been fulfilled, to your knowledge?
Yes, to staff's knowledge, they have been completed.
And, and so that's, okay, so that, that would be part of the, that's incorporated into the conditions of approval of what's before us tonight.
Mm-hmm.
Okay, thanks. I just wanted that clarification, that those are still applicable. Mr. Friend, you've got a question for staff?
I do have a question with regards to the additional item that you gave us this evening and the condition, condition 10 that staff's recommending. My question on this is, what is the timeframe for compliance? How will it be enforced, and what are the consequences for not completing, et cetera, et cetera? I agree with the condition, is responsible for submitting an amendment, but it's like, okay, well, when and how, and if they don't, what happens, and et cetera, et cetera. So I'm confused on that. And do we need language that kind of ties that all together?
We don't need any additional language to, to indicate how the, the city will enforce that condition, but basically, we will engage the property owner prior to turning it over to code enforcement, and then you get a notice to correct. Notice to correct will give them 14 days to respond and reach out to department staff and give us a timeframe where we meet and confer. How long do they need, and is it what we would call a good faith effort then to comply? And we'll work with the property owner if they need additional time, what have you, if it, if it makes sense, if more time is needed. But let's just say they ignore it, which a lot of times we run into that situation, then we send them a first administrative fine, and they're fined $100 for the first violation. They have another 14 days, and they have the ability to appeal, both the notice to correct, and they have the ability to appeal all the fines. But then after 14 days, then it's a $200 fine. After that, it's a $500 fine, and we continue to fine them 500. So typically, by the time we reach the second administrative fine, we will file a notice of noncompliance on the property, so it clouds title. So anytime in the future they want to get a loan, or they want to sell the property, typically that would come out in title. And so we find ourselves, a lot of times, on these code enforcement issues, that's when compliance occurs.
Okay. So going back then to number 10, says the property owner manager is responsible for submitting an amendment of the sign plan for the remainder of the commercial property. So the question is, how much time before it becomes, oh, they haven't done what they're supposed to do? That's what I'm unclear about. It's ambiguous to me when they're supposed to do this. What's the time, I mean, shouldn't this language say they're responsible for submitting within 90 days, 120 days, or something time-specific?
We don't really need to put that in, in, in the conditions of approval, because basically, they will get a copy of these conditions, and then we will reach out to the owner.
All right.
We reach out, you know, both in writing, and probably will try and contact them in saying, you know, focus in on this condition of approval. And if, and again, if we don't hear anything, they get a notice to correct, and then they have 14 days.
Okay.
And that starts the clock for enforcement, so.
All right.
I'd rather stay away from actually putting in a lengthy, but if, if it makes the planning commission comfortable, we can certainly say that, you know, I, I would recommend maybe giving them 30 days, one month to.
So you'd say within, the language would read then, responsible for submitting an amendment of the sign plan with the remainder of the commercial property, blah, 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 within 30 days of approval of this request?
Yes, I think that'd be, that'd be.
That would make me happier, because it's a little bit more time-specific and accountable. So we'll wait and see how everybody else feels about that.
No, that's good, because it puts a little less on us.
Sure.
Chair Keeney, if I may, I want to point out that staff has been having these kinds of problems as of late quite a bit with our commercial centers. These commercial centers are sometimes either owned or managed by people that are out of town, so they don't live within the city, and then it's difficult to coordinate with them. But as was stated in the staff report, we find ourselves in managing these properties, not just these, but a lot of properties that are owned by somebody that's out of town. But with respect to the master sign plan, master sign plan is what the property owner wishes for that commercial center to look like, to provide for that coordinated signage between the various tenants. So as it states in our code, any, any commercial center or building for that matter that has three or more businesses within it, it requires a master sign plan, and that's the chance for the building owner, the property owner, to work with the city on having a more uniform type of signage that matches the architectural style of, of the building and enhances the ability of the various tenants to advertise. So here, in this particular case, you can see that the original master sign plan called for these individual white channel lettering. And that's very limited flexibility to the property owner, really, to convey their business to the traveling public that goes by. The pole sign, I think, says Creekside Plaza, or Creekside Place, or something like that. It used to, it used to have, it used to advertise all the tenants that were in there, and at some time in the past, then the owner decided not to do that anymore. So I think it's, it's even more important for the various tenants to have signage that, that is more visible to the traveling public. But you could see that the cabinets that are proposed for Minuteman and Mountain Mail are very different than the other signage. So you're going to have sort of a, a very distinct difference in the style of signage. And so that's the purpose of really trying to get to the property owner, to have them come in and make something a little more flexible, so as tenants come and go, it's going to be a more coordinated signage for that building.
And that, that new sign, master sign plan would be ministerially approved? That wouldn't come before this body?
What we're asking of the property owner would come before you.
It would come, okay. So we're looking for a global change for?
Then that would become ministerial to your tenants.
Okay.
Ideally.
Mr. Carter, you have a question?
I'm going to defer to Commissioner Carter first, if, if he has a question.
Thank you. I just had a question going forward. So now, now that we've, that we've varied from this plan, there's not going, you're asking for uniformity in the signage, so the existing businesses on that center are complying, they're, they're complying with the existing sign plan, which is different than what we're doing here. So I don't want to have unintended consequences to existing businesses. They won't have to change their signs necessarily. Would it be as new businesses come in, then that would, we're not forcing the existing businesses to, to, to change to these cabinet-style signs in this new sign plan you're asking the business owner, or the, the property owner, to bring before us?
We would not. It would be as new businesses.
Excellent, okay. I was worried about the unintended consequences to the existing businesses.
It is, well, we'll discuss.
Well, I'm kind of, yeah, that's, Commissioner Lepper, I can't see if you have your light on or not. Okay. So that, that's kind of related to my question. Is the applicant in this case, Mountain Mail, Minuteman Press?
In this instance, generally, when applications come before the commission, the applicants are the property owner, with representatives being the tenants.
Okay. But the, so is the property or, so basically, we have nonconformity right now. We have, we have a code enforcement issue, right? And we're going to, we're trying to correct that for Minuteman, Mountain Mail and Minuteman Press. Is that correct? Am I understanding that now?
Yes, they currently have unpermitted signs that deviate from the signature sign plan.
Okay. So the action before us this evening is to approve the, the signs with the conditions as set forth here, but still allowing the existing businesses not be compelled, as I think was Commissioner Carter and perhaps Commissioner Lepers' question, not compelling the other businesses to change their signs, but we want the property owner to come back with a master sign package, or whatever that, however that reads, right? Which is going to result in, like, one of two things. Either the other businesses are going to have to change their signs, or a Mountain Mail, Minuteman Press is going to have to change their signs. So I'm, I'm kind of confused as to where we're going to, you know, what can go with this, and what does the, really, then, that gets back to condition 10. What is condition 10 going to mean? What would that amendment look like that we're requesting the property owner to do? Am I making sense?
Yes.
I think, you know.
So Chair Keeney, if I may, so I think, I think Commissioner Friend is running into a lot of the confusion that staff runs into in this predicament. Again, we have a situation where the property owner is sort of disengaged, and so the city finds itself caught in the middle between, we're now managing the tenant and their signs. So what's before you are the two new signs, Minuteman Press and Mountain Mail. And so we want to approve those signs. We, we think they're appropriate, but do they match those white individual channel letters? They do not. This, what's before you will not change those signs for those businesses. They can keep their signs as long as they're leasing the building. Should a new tenant come in, that's why we want the owner to come in with a revised master sign plan, to revise, to incorporate the design for all the signs, so that we can have something a little bit more consistent. So a new tenant comes in, they're going to have something that's more in line with the channel type of signs, and not have to come in with the white individual channel letters. Is that, is that?
Yeah, okay. So, so the implementation of condition 10, from staff's perspective, assuming we approve it, is that the property owner, that, that amendment, they're going to develop, they're going to actually have to consult with staff first. They're going to have to meet with you, discuss with you what it is staff wants them to do, right? Because otherwise, they, they probably wouldn't know what they need to do, and you're going to provide them direction in the creation of the amendment that they will then submit to you. Is that, how that's going to work?
Yeah, it'll be a little more collaborative. In other words, the, the property owner is going to tell us, well, what do you want to see for your center?
Okay.
Do they want to, because, I mean, this property owner, maybe he would want to go back to the white channel letters and put the other ones then out of compliance in, in the future, whenever there's a change in tendency in those suites. But I think those cabinets are what I suspect, or I'm making the assumption that the property owner is going to want to see as new businesses move into the various suites. But again, this is a problem that we're running into. It puts staff in between with, with a tenant. So one of the things we're looking at doing is when we, we're going to amend our master sign plan, it's really putting a lot of the responsibility on the property owner, so that when a new tenant comes in, that property owner has a responsibility, we're not going to require them to put in their lease agreement, but the lease agreement at least should identify that there's a master sign plan. New tenant, welcome to my center, this is the master sign plan, please design, design your sign accordingly, and get a building permit. I hope that makes sense.
And we're also intending to change our sign permit application to require the property owner sign off, saying that it complies with the master sign plan. They are aware that the sign is coming forward.
Did you have a?
No, I think you guys touched on the questions that I was landing at, is basically, I didn't want to approve this and then have it subsequently make a big change, especially like movement and things like that of the signs. And then my other, only other question was, does the color, the building, I believe, has been painted, and then the red awnings, that is not under review from us at all?
That's not before you tonight?
Not tonight. No, 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 sorry. That's not under, that's completely up to them in terms of the.
Well, I would have to, I would have to look at the original approval of the, of the commercial center, because the elevations and materials and color may have been a part of that approval.
Okay, cool. To be, not, not a big deal, just was wondering. Thank you. I think other thing else will be under discussion, or was previously asked by you guys.
Any other questions for staff? Okay. We'd like to ask the business owner, applicant, to step up to the podium, if there's anything you'd like to add to the application, or anything you want to emphasize? And if you would, state your name for the record.
I'm Philip Terazas. I'm the owner of Minuteman Press and Mountain Mail. And I guess I'm the slash applicant on the master sign plan, and wasn't discussed yet, was a change of occupancy. The, so the, I don't know if the dates are correct, need to be validate or updated here, but there's a couple of different lapses on the dates. So we took occupancy in 2021, in the middle of the great flu. And so the challenge being is, there was nobody, everything, a lot of things were closed, and there wasn't a lot of communication. There's just a lot of situations that are happening that wasn't a consistent business atmosphere. And so we moved in there. First of all, most people have said that we, that businesses go in that center to die. Basically, it's a terrible center, the location's terrible, because it's down under. My, both of my businesses are strong, we're busy, and big support to the community, and we do signs as well. The challenge I had was, I'm embarrassed, and I apologize for putting those signs up because I didn't know that, that needed to happen. I was only going off the Dignity Dragon, huge sign that was there. And so I was only going by that, that footprint, and thinking, okay, we can do an illuminated sign. There hadn't been any communication with the business owner, or, excuse me, the property owner. It was the management company, great people, they've been around for a long time, but there was nothing, any sign off on any master plan, what you could or couldn't do. When we moved in there, we didn't take any walls out, we didn't, we just opened up shop. We brought everything over from down the street that'd been there for over 40 years, occupied. So the, so when we did put up the sign and whatnot, we, how we did it was, since, we put it in the middle, because we occupy suites A, B, and C. C is towards more, towards the outside of the building.
Right, okay.
And so that being said, is that when we did it, we tried to align the signs with the windows, not the gutters. And if, for God forbid, in that time of inconsistency with business and whatnot, is if we had to divide it and stay in one small business, so instead of having to find three, we wanted to make it where we can just take one sign down and then occupy one space. So we didn't think that it would be viable to go to, from the edge of the building, where the, where the 415 would be, to where Karen's Tax Services, that, that didn't look to us that that would be where we're trying to go for center. So that's what we tried to do. We tried to access the sign along the street, but eco-signs, which actually put these signs up and measured them and put them perfectly, that we feel that, on the building, they said, you do not want to touch that sign in the street, because once you open up, that sign is going to fall apart. So I guess what had happened was, this is just the way that it is, meaning the, the internal of the sign, not the frame, just the fact of how it's in there. These sheets of poly, poly carb are very, very expensive, so I would say it'd be about three or four, $2,000, $3,000 just for the sheets there. So I didn't even want to touch that sign, because I didn't want to be liable for it. So it's fine, it's sound, it's just that, that the interior stuff needs to be replaced, and that stuff gets kind of like broken up from the sun. So again, I want to apologize for not seeking out approval. It was assumed, and I know what assumption means. The first time I met with Isabel was that my sign was blinking, and I was going, okay, great, I'll, I'll put it, I'll just put it to no blinking, we don't want any blinking. great, I'll put it, I'll just put it to no blinking, we don't want any blinking. And then it was great, and I thought, okay, great, that's no problem. She says, I'm new, I said, great, hey, it's all cool, come on in, whatever we're doing. And then I come to find out that a couple weeks later, I get a change of occupancy, that I didn't do something like that. I don't know that, now that's something I don't know. And in the process, I've always been told, when speaking to Isabel, and is that it's an easy process, no problem, we'll go for it, you just gotta, because we're going, you're going from a restaurant down to retail, and it goes from a high occupancy, high time of, I'm in the business, to quicken not as high occupancy. And she says, no big deal, we can do it. So where I'm leading to, is that we did the application within the, within a month. We tried to get within the timeframe. I didn't know what the heck I was doing. It's before the, it was in '23, it's before the holiday season, we're gonna get, we're just, it's getting busy. So we were, I was trying to figure it out, what do I do? And so my wife and I were on the side of the building, measuring things up, measuring the walls, and it's like, wait, all this stuff, we didn't do anything different. All we did is moved in, and we kept the kitchen, and tried to get rid of the grease. It's really not as successful as it was, and we kept the ceiling. We didn't change the ceiling, it's still there, for the last, however many years it's been there. So I, trying to get help with the property owner, she's semi-retired, she's in Sutter Creek, she's in her 80s, and then with the property management company, great people, but I mean, I don't know what to say, I'm not gonna here to throw anybody under the bus, it's that, so then it was like, hey, change of occupancy, I go, oh my, what is that? Okay, so we're doing that paperwork, and then all of a sudden, the hammer comes down to the signs, and I go, that's, okay, this, okay, I messed up. So then I talked to the property management company, and said, you can do what you want, we'll get your approval. So I work with, I didn't even know who to contact, even though we do bunches of plans for the city and the county, and print them and all that stuff, trying to find somebody to do a floor plan and all this stuff. So one thing after another, for just the occupancy, which I guess it hasn't been changed yet, we, I've spent $4,000, just, I don't know what I spent it on, just for plans, and this, and a draw, and this and that, just to try to submit it to the city, and we keep on, I guess, hitting, hitting short on that. And this guy's been in business for god knows, 40, 50 years, he's retired, he's worked with a lot of city people, worked with a lot of the county personnel in doing structures, and we, the challenge is that, the property owner goes, hey, you know what, we can go ahead, you can do what you wanna do, because that, we wrote, she gave us a letter of intent, she had her driver's license, all the things the city required to do. So then it took it on to me, to pay and to sponsor all this information, and it seemed like we were trying and trying and trying. And the only time that this has been successful, and I'll end in the next couple, let's say less than a minute here, is when I was at a NED meeting, Denny's, and here comes Pierre, and he's in there, and he's like, I'm not supposed to be here, but I guess I'll stay, because you guys are local businesses. And then after the meeting, I said, Pierre, please, I begged him, I said, could you just come by, and can you, could we, I'm having some issues with the city, you're the man, and I need some help. And so, in all good faith, I have tried and tried, and it must be me, because maybe everybody else in the city that have businesses are not going and having this personal meeting. I feel important, but thank you, but the fact, but every, my wife is behind me, is by big support. So the fact that I'm trying to do, we're trying to do the right thing, the owner, as well as the property manager, has given me authority to do what I need to do, to make sure it happens, whether, I don't know if that makes sense or not. So again, thank you for taking my time here.
Thank you for coming down, and it sounds like you've been put through your paces, and you've, you know, persevered.
We do business with the city.
I'm about to hear that you have spoken with the property owner, it sounds like you already have, that was one of my questions for you, you've already, they've approved you're changing the signs.
Plans and permit, and all these things, and my wife's time, my time, and the fact is that I don't know what we're doing wrong, and I don't know if it's Pierre, I don't know who it is, and I'm not here to throw anybody under the bus, God forbid, because we're all in this small community. I have a business here, and I pay business taxes, and I have my home here for 25 years in Plasterville, and I pay my taxes, I don't have to be, there's nothing that I do that wants to be, I don't act in good, in bad faith. So I come before you to try to figure this out, because this is, when I'm hearing everybody talk, and all these things here, and it needs to be moved over an inch or two, I don't know what to do.
Well, you know, on the silver lining of the cloud then, it sounds like you've been through quite a bit, but you know, you are working with staff, it sounds like, you know, you're making your way through the process. And I think, too, it's that, you know, the city now has a better code enforcement program, and so these things are coming before us, and perhaps, you know, in your history as a, as a business owner, you know, these things didn't necessarily, didn't come to light, you know, in your, your business experience. But thank you for coming down here and taking time to tell us about this project. Do any of the other commissioners have any questions for the applicant? Well, thank you again, we really appreciate you coming down here. And would you like to say anything else? I'll give you this opportunity, this is part of the public hearing process, if your wife would like to speak to the project, but, okay. And seeing no one else in the audience, then I'm going to close the public comment portion of our hearing, and bring it back to the Commission for Deliberation and Action. And so I'll just start that, you know, it is a dramatic change from the existing signage, and that is a little startling, I'll just be honest, but I've driven, you know, up and down, past this below-grade shopping center, you know, since, since I came here, and it is hard to see what is down there. Even, you know, the Karen's Tax, I don't even know, I've seen the sign, I don't know, I don't remember what it says, I remember Mountain Mail, I mean, that's very eye-catching. And even though that's, that's very sophisticated for that business, it's not easy to see. And, you know, dignity dragon, as I remember, it was just kind of, it took up some space, so you kinda got used to, you know, what it was, but it wasn't particularly easy to read. So, you know, hopefully with the, then having a integrated, amended signage plan, what the owner and the city, you know, we can come up with is something that improves that visibility, without having to go to the monument sign out by the road, improves the visibility, you know, just down below grade. So those are my thoughts on this. And so, Mr. Carter, you've got your microphone on, go ahead.
Yeah, I just had a quick question for staff, in regards to the change in occupancy. I saw in the footnote on page three, that it's exempt from site plan review, because as he said, it is lowering the intensity of the use. So is that separate from this action, or will that happen ministerially as part of this action?
It's not a part of this action whatsoever, it's a separate, it's gonna be handled ministerially for the building permit. And the building permit is underway, it just hasn't been issued yet.
Yeah, the applicant brought it up, so I wanted to address that we, yeah, I saw that it was a ministerial issue, so it wouldn't come back before us or anything, so, okay. That was my only question.
Any other comments about?
Oh, I'm just gonna reiterate, though, going back to condition 10, that I think there should be some time specificity, and I think that in the discussion with staff, that within 30 days of approval of the request.
Thirty days?
Yeah, 30 days. And that just at least gets the ball rolling, because then staff knows, hey, they had 30 days to do this, now they haven't, then the staff can start to do whatever staff has to do. I'm just uncomfortable leaving it open-ended, so.
You know, I'm not, but, you know, I see, your point is well taken, and it seemed, you know, staff is agreeable to that, maybe it gives a little, yeah, time pressure to move forward this, I, you know, we don't know what's gonna happen with the other businesses in there, and before something else new comes in, it would be great to have this new signage plan in place, so that everybody knows what's expected of them. So I'm perfectly fine with that.
One question.
Yes, go ahead.
My question would be whether 30 days is adequate for the applicant, I don't know what their situation is.
I think it'd be 30 days to at least get it going, and then come in and work with staff, right?
30 days to submit an application. You've been working with, trying to work with them for years now.
And that's, that's for the, that's for the master sign plan, not for this project?
That's for the property owner managers, not for the applicant themselves. This is for the people who own it, they're responsible for it.
That addresses your concern?
That answers it.
Okay, very good.
What are you guys' thoughts about the movement of the signs?
That was gonna be my next question.
Okay, yeah, because that was the only thing, I guess, I don't know that it's totally necessary, and I, especially if it's burdensome on electrical, or, or just labor and money that the applicant has to put further forward. As he described, they have the three suites, I don't know, I guess I just don't think it's gonna make a significant difference, so I'm kind of disinclined to mandate it. What do you guys think about it?
I definitely tend to agree with you, I was actually gonna ask staff, because I don't see any, like, how much of a move is that actually going to be for that right-hand sign? And do we know off, I mean, it's, it looks min, like, pretty minimal.
Yeah, it's a, it's an estimate.
Okay, yeah.
So I don't have, I don't have a number.
I think it would be, if we had a master sign plan that talks about this type, it could address things like centering over businesses, and, but I, I agree with you.
The current master sign plan does specify that it must be centered.
Okay, that is, that is part of the.
Which is, which is one of the reasons staff recommended it.
Yeah, no, I see the, I see where your, your, like, mind was with that, but I just, I'm just not sure, and that was gonna be one of my questions to the applicant, is how burdensome that would be, because if it is a simple fix, then I guess, I guess I will ask the applicant, how burdensome would it be if you could come to the podium?
Please, coming back up to the podium.
So I'm estimating ECO signs to come out, and I'm thinking it's a minimum of probably about 750 to 1500 to move them, because they'd have to move both signs, and then the electrical, and they can't just like splice couplers onto the wiring, so I would say probably mostly around, I would say 1,000 to 1500 bucks.
Okay, thank you very much.
Which would be almost the initial cost to put them up in the first place, so, yeah, I appreciate it.
I appreciate you giving that information, yeah, so especially based on that, I think it's a little bit financially burdensome, if it was 25 bucks, you know, I might consider it, but I think that sounds a little bit more than I think the outcome is worth. And then my only other thought was, like, I think that for the business that is presenting with the FedEx and the UPS, and postal signs, that it's appropriate to have the cabinet signs, so that, because I think those as individual logos would start to get really messy. So in this, again, particular suite situation, I think that that is appropriate for what they are advertising. Those are my thoughts.
I definitely agree, and I, I drive by this center multiple times per day, and so I've been making a point to look at it every time I drive by, and I think it looks great. I think it's centered between the downspouts, and I think that was kind of their, yeah, as opposed to being centered over the, over the windows. And I think it would be more incongruous if it was centered over the windows. It looks, to me, it looks appropriate, because those downspouts are so prominent on the building, it looks appropriate to me to be centered between the downspouts, so I would be inclined to keep the signs where they're at personally.
The other questions I had were answered, which was putting undue burden if we were to come back around, do a master sign plan, and say, you know, move your signs, really, when I was looking at it moving, and then a master sign plan, I didn't want it to have, as you stated, unintended consequences on the applicant, so, but in this situation, it sounds like we're gonna clear up the future sign plan with the owner. I am in support of approving the current signs for the applicant.
And just like Commissioner Friend was struggling a little bit with not placing an undue burden on existing businesses to change, then this would be grandfathered in, if that is an element of the new sign plan, to have things centered in a certain way, so, yeah, this would just be carried through when we get the new master sign plan It was going to be my suggestion that we just roll the requirement for the, it's listed as number 10, number 10, property owner managers responsible for submitting an amendment of the sign plan. I was just going to suggest that we add that to the beginning of condition number 3. I had slightly different language, but we can just use it as printed here, so the, condition of approval number 3 would read, property owner managers responsible for submitting an amendment of the sign plan, and so on, period. And then the property owner shall be responsible for ensuring that each tenant is made aware of and complies with the master sign plan, as it's written, for number 3. That was gonna be my suggestion, just to have all of that addressed.
Just, so I'm clear, you would take the language of 10, put it at the beginning of 3.
Mm-hmm. Where we start to talk about the, the first time we talk about the masters.
So could we, can we then preface that, and put the 30-day requirement right up at the front, within 30 days of approval of this request, the property owner shall be?
Yes, yes.
And then they're also responsible for notifying the tenants, and that gives them a timeframe with them to do that as well. That puts it all in one nicely neat little package.
Mm-hmm.
Okay, I like that.
I like the idea of bringing this up, you know, earlier on in our list of conditions of approval, emphasizing the importance, and so, right, so add the, within 30 days, the property owner manager is responsible for submitting an amendment, and then ensuring each tenant is made aware of and complies with the master sign plan. I did ask staff about the other existing conditions of approval from the previous site plan reviews, and my concern was under site, the original approval, so at the bottom on page 2 of 2, site plan review 8504, 1985 original approval. Number 2, the applicant will place additional planters in front of the building and present the plan for, such to, for, to staff for review and approval. So I guess I need to get clarification from staff, what planters are we talking about? Are we talking about, I think I can see them on one of the pictures of the site, are we talking about the little islands of plants between the parking spaces, or are you talking about planters directly in front of the building, like next to the door?
Yeah, I don't think staff is really sure, we didn't get into the minutia for that particular condition, but, you know, seeing the site, it looks like there's plantings about the building, so.
So you don't see those, those planters? Because I didn't notice them when I, you know, when I've been there. So my point is, these additional planters, if we're talking about planting boxes in front of the building?
I think we're talking maybe the landscape islands, and it just may have, landscape islands?
They are the planting islands.
It may, yeah, that, those may be.
Okay. So as long as it's limited to that, they've already constructed that, I just don't want to have them comply with something that is maybe not going to be successful in that spot, but they, so my understanding now is, we're talking about those planting islands between, like, the, a couple of parking stalls up and down, okay.
We, without double-checking the original approval, it's hard to say, but that would be staff's interpretation.
And I would just add that that would have been something that would have been checked prior to occupancy when the, when it was first developed.
Mm-hmm. Okay. I just, again, I don't want to, since we're looking at enforcing, improving our enforcement of all of these conditions of approval, I don't want to carry over something that wasn't a success. So I, when I read that, I thought it meant, well, for example, say in this dark area underneath the window, it meant directly in front of a business, but, so now I understand you, you think it's talking about those planted areas, so that's fine. Okay, thank you.
Yeah, I would just say that at the time when staff would have done a site review before occupancy, when the building was completed, it should have been checked off at that time that it complied.
Okay. All right, well, we'll leave that as it is.
Yeah, it's not really, it's not really before us, those, those older conditions, because they should have been satisfied then, they should have been checked off at the time the building was constructed.
So, and as you stated early, as far as you know, all of these conditions have been met, okay. You had a question or concern?
I was just gonna make a motion.
My question was gonna be, so in order to amend the motion to remove staff's recommendation of moving the sign, what do we have to remove from the findings?
Oh, yeah, you're right, because there were options.
Would it just be number 3, as amended by staff, if we remove that wording, would that allow them to keep the signs as they're currently?
I'm sorry, which one, which number 3 are you referencing?
On the findings, or sorry, the recommend, yeah, the following findings in support of SPR. On number 3, if we just remove as amended by staff, would that be sufficient to allow them to keep their signs where they're currently placed?
I believe so, because the other recommendation by staff was the inclusion of the recommended condition of approval.
I couldn't find it anywhere else in the, in the motion, yeah, so.
I believe that would be the only recommend, yeah.
Yes, and so forgive me, I did not follow that fully, the number 3. Yes, and so forgive me, I did not follow that fully. The number three finding?
Yeah. Sure.
Okay, great, I would love that.
I am prepared to make a motion.
You got it, you got it, do it.
I just wanted to make sure that we captured that he didn't have to move the sign, so, yeah.
Yes, no, I'm with you, and you're right, because we have the options in there, so thank you.
Okay, well, I will move that we adopt the staff report as part of the public record. That we make the following findings in support of SPR 85-04-R, that the project is exempt from SEQA, that we amend finding number three to remove the wording as amended by staff in the project request is consistent with general plan, community design, element, goal J, that we conditionally approve SPR 85-04-R located at 415 Placerville Drive based on project information and findings included in the staff report and subject to recommended conditions of approval included in attachment A of the staff report dated October 1st, 2024, amending those recommended conditions of approval on item number three to read, within 30 days-
From approval.
From approval, the property owner or manager is responsible for submitting an amendment of the site plan for the remainder of the commercial property to create a uniform plan for signage on the building. And then the rest of item three would read as it is. And then, oh, sorry, oh, and then, and then incorporating the other changes included on the memorandum that was handed out today from planning staff dated October 1st, 2024.
A second, and then just some discussion on, on number three. And I apologize, I should not have tried to butt in there. So number three, the language exactly as you read, except the tie-in with language 10 and language three, so that that 30, that 30 days carries over to notifying the tenants. Just want to make sure that language, it, it covers that. And, so I think it should, should have just been an "and." And, and the property owner shall be, as well as, or should say, as well as be responsible for ensuring. You follow what I'm saying?
I do. And my only concern would be that this, this change would only apply to future tenants, not current tenants. So the, the current tenants wouldn't need to be notified, because their, their signs wouldn't have to change any.
So you're saying it's not really important that the tenants are made aware of and comply with the master sign plan?
Within 30 days, because we're not asking to change anything to the current tenants. It would only be as new tenants come in that those changes would have to occur, if the sign plan requires that.
And staff's intent with this condition is in the future. When new tenants come in, they must be made aware. So it, it's not just within a 30-day period, staff would like it in perpetuity.
So the 30-day, the, the issue of 30 days is make sure the property owner gets the amendment to you folks. All right, fair enough, that's good. Thanks for that clarification.
I had a question. So just to be clear in your motion, you included findings four and five. The project, number five reads the project request as amended and conditioned, so we need-
Thank you.
Also strike that-
Good catch.
With, from your motion. But my concern, I want to make sure that we aren't throwing also out the amendment by staff, or the recommendation by staff, all about the master sign plan amendment. So by striking that phrase, as amended and conditioned by staff, and then including in the conditions of approval that the property owner manager come in for a master sign plan amendment, that still is in force. Or do we need to change the language of the finding to strictly say, the project request, the project request as amended and conditioned by staff, like, with the exception of centering these signs? Do we need to be specific about that? I don't, I don't want to throw out-
No, you know what I would recommend. Typically, what we do is, is it's consistent because of the, as conditioned.
So as conditioned, okay, that's-
And then you, it covers all the conditions of approval.
So the project request as conditioned, so we'll just strike as amended. Okay, now I'm clear on that.
As amended by staff should be struck.
So, as amended, so-
It's as conditioned.
As conditioned by staff, okay.
So I, I will amend my motion then to change number five from the memorandum, the finding, to take out as amended.
Just take out as amended.
Oh, amended.
The as, because it's going to say as conditioned.
By staff, so amended and the two words removed, so it's reads as conditioned by staff.
Is it, I would just say as conditioned, because we're all-
Oh, conditioned.
Yeah, I would just say as conditioned.
You're going to strike amended by staff is what you're going to strike.
It's, it's ultimately the planning commission that approves the conditions.
The project request as conditioned is consistent.
As conditioned, okay.
Excellent.
I support the plan.
So we have a mo- an amended, slightly amended motion, and the second stands? Okay.
Yes, correct.
All right. Further discussion?
Just ready to take care of your motion.
All right. Ms. Hunter, will you please call a vote?
Vice Chair Carter?
Aye.
Commissioner Friend?
Aye.
Barrakini?
Aye.
Commissioner Lepper?
Aye.
Commissioner Smith?
Aye.
Okay, that is approved 5-0. Congratulations. There is a 10-day period of calendar days to appeal any action taken by the planning commission. So, just so you, you are aware of that. But thank you again for coming down and talking to us and your patience. And also want to thank you once more for running a wonderful business that's a real benefit to our community. So thank you, and have a good evening.
I still have to get my poster back to you. I have forgot, I haven't forgotten, dude. I will get there.
Okay, so we'll move on to item 11, which is continued items, and that is the general plan consistency, 24-01 government code section, general plan consistency review for transfer of property. So this has been withdrawn by El Dorado County. Mr. Rivas, so it's still on our agenda. Any further discussion or just kind of review and, and file?
No, I'm happy to read this into the record. Staff did prepare a memorandum based on the rescission, or the request to rescind. Well, actually, they are, there's no longer an application for consistency. So basically, it was your meeting on September the 17th. The planning commission did consider the request of the county for a finding of general plan consistency in regard to that sliver of property between the Placerville Armory and Ray Lawyer Drive. So they have since withdrawn that request, and that's also provided in your packet. And so we no longer have an application to make such a finding. And that concludes staff's report, and that includes this item.
Okay, thank you very much. We will move on then to item number 12, new business, which is the 12.1, 2023 Housing Element Annual Progress Report, Cycle 6. Receive and file the Housing Element Annual Report and provide staff with any comments if any to be forwarded to city council. And before I turn this over to you, Ms. Hunter, for your staff report, I, that's a lot of work. And, you know, congratulations, so I'll turn it over to you.
Thank you. So state law requires cities and counties to prepare an annual report on the status of implementation of their housing element by April 1st of each year. The annual report must be submitted to the city council, the governor's office of planning and research, or ORP, and the Department of Housing and Community Development, or HCD. Staff submitted the annual progress report to ORP and HCD on July 24th of this year. This transmittal of the annual progress report to planning commission and subsequently to city council shall complete the city's reporting requirements for 2023. HCD developed a standardized progress report form for municipalities statewide to utilize for annual reporting purposes. The spreadsheet form was reproduced at size to generate copies for the commission. To summarize, in 2023, a total of 10 dwelling unit permit applications were received by the development services department, including five single-family dwellings, one duplex, and four accessory dwelling units, or ADUs. 20 dwelling unit permits were issued, including 11 ADUs, nine single-family dwellings. And then 11 dwelling unit permits were finalled, of which 11, sorry, out of which, none were very low or low-income category units. All were moderate or above moderate. And then those 11 included nine ADUs and two single-family dwellings. So staff is asking the commission to receive the annual progress report for 2023 and to direct staff to submit the report to city council. This concludes staff's report.
Thank you very much. Any comments from commissioners on the staff report, or any comments that you would like forwarded to city council on this item?
Clarification. On page two, under, right at the, at the top, we talk about discretionary application totals. What is a two to four?
Two to four would be a duplex to a, a fourplex. That's just the way the state identifies them. It is confusing.
Okay, fair enough. And then-
So it's either, either duplex or a fourplex?
Duplex, triplex, or fourplex? Oh, it's not a change from two to a four, it's, it's a size ranging from two to four. Okay. Another question. Egregious state law allows for the insertion of high-density projects in R1 zoning without any discretion or consideration by commission, it's simply ministerial through staff. And with no setbacks, no guidelines, almost nothing. Do those show up in these statistics as there was an application for that type of a project?
I believe we would. I think you're talking about SB 9, and I do-
Yeah, I am talking about that.
That we would have to report on that.
Where would that show up in any of these tables?
You were not provided any, because we didn't have any.
Okay, well, that's the good news, we didn't have any. But if we did, where, where would it show up, you know?
I'm not sure which table it would fall in.
Okay, but, but it would get reported, so we would know.
Yes.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Yeah, if I could just address that SB 9, that was the state provision that basically stated that a property owner could come in by right and subdivide their property. So they would have not only a home on each of the new parcels, but also an ADU. So you go from one to two units to actually up to four units. So, yeah, to finish my thought on that, so the entirety of the city of Placerville is within what's called a very high fire hazard severity zone. And that is listed as one of the criteria that the city could use to deny such an application. So I think it's, I don't see one happening unless the state law changes that provision. Thank you.
My question was about the ADUs. So in our housing element, we, we do anticipate part of our low and really low-income housing to be satisfied by ADUs. But I see that none of the ADUs during this period qualified for that. Can you give me some idea of how an ADU? Because I think reading the housing element, we were expecting during this period to have 27 ADUs that were going to be from 2020 to 2029, that were going to fall into that low to, to very low income category. How would that happen?
Staff is not allowed to report an ADU is meeting low or very low unless we can verify what's being paid and that it meets the criteria. And so we just, we don't do that. We don't do the survey. We don't query the property owners as to what they're renting out their units for.
Understood. I, I saw in there, anticipated rent, I think, is, is the qualifier that makes it moderately high-income or whatever, whichever category it falls into. But I was curious, because in our housing element, it does say that ADUs are going to help us satisfy our arena. It's in there. And so I, we should have some method for doing that, because we are kind of depending on that to meet our arena. So just curious, you know, how that, how that all works, so.
Yeah, I don't think we are. Basically, we have Mallard and Middletown. Mallard is, if, if you drive by, you can see they're already putting the foundation in. That'll be 72, 100% affordable. Middletown would be 82 units, 100% affordable. We will meet our arena by 2029.
Absolutely, yeah.
So we're doing very well. But I understand what you're saying. I wish we had the staff time to actually do those queries, we just don't.
It was just more a process question, because I had seen that in there, and I just wondered how that worked. So, understood, thank you.
I had a question. There, there's a statement on page four about development of objective design standards is underway. And so I, I just wanted to ask if there was a timeline for the objective standards? I think somewhere else I, I saw that you had started working with a consultant on that, so.
Yeah, we're trying to engage a consultant. Hopefully, we don't run out of time. But we're trying to, because we had to do the environmental review. Once we have the objective design standards, then we can, then we'll move forward with a general plan amendment and rezone to put the housing opportunity overlay on these two additional parcels. So that'll just allow, if the property owner wishes, or a developer comes in and purchases the property, if they wish to develop it as a affordable housing project, that they can do so without losing the underlying zone entitlements that they have.
And will those objective standards come before planning commission for review? Okay, good. Any other questions about the report or comments to forward to city council? Okay, great. Thank you very much. A lot of work for this report. So we'll move on to 13 matters from commissioners and staff. Anything from staff to-
Chair Akini, I'm thinking maybe you should move then to request staff to forward it to the city council.
Oh, I'm sorry, we do have to take action on this. Okay, so-
Any comments or changes?
Does that require, require a vote, a motion? I'm sorry, I wasn't clear on that.
By voice.
I'm sorry, vo- voice vote?
Yeah.
Okay. Need a motion. I'll make the motion to forward the 2023 Housing Element Annual Progress Report, Cycle 6, to our city council.
I'll second that.
Thank you very much. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? That was 5-0, okay.
Aye, sorry.
Thank you. All right, I'm, I apologize. I, I thought you just were collecting comments and, so. Now, now we will move on to matters from commissioners and staff. Anything from staff?
We will have a meeting on the 15th. I apologize for any confusion, because when I sent out that email, I really did think we weren't going to do it. So, but we, we do, we have one item that will come before you on the 15th.
Thank you. All right, we'll move on to-
Chair Akini, I do have just a couple items. Staff received an alert from a law firm that basically is looking at the different new legislations passed by the state. So it looks like Governor Newsom signs three new accessory dwelling unit bills. So we have Senate Bill, or Assembly Bill 2533, Senate Bill 1211, and Senate Bill 1077. We're studying those. The one that we're probably most concerned about is AB 2533, and that's in regards to unpermitted ADUs and JADUs. And that would be where the, the government code will prohibit local, local agencies from denying a permit to legalize an unpermitted ADU that was constructed prior to January 1st, 2018, if the denial is based on the ADU not complying with applicable building, state, or local ADU standards. So it's one of those situations where the state is basically saying that if somebody was able to get away with illegally constructing an ADU or JADU, and they're under the wire before that date, there's not a whole lot we can do about it.
Okay. All right, and you said you're working with council to review this and see how the city can?
This was brought to our attention by a law firm that specializes in bringing the attention of various agencies of all the different legislation that's been passed. So, so staff is working on reviewing our existing codes and what changes we need to make to bring our code in conformance with these regulations. Because basically, what, what they're trying to bring to our attention is that because the state law requires complete, across-the-board consistency between a local ordinance and state ADU law, nearly every, if not every, city and county in the state with a local ADU ordinance, which we have, will once again need to amend its ordinance to comply with the, with the new changes. Failure to do so by January 1st, 2025 will render-
Failure to do so by January 1st, 2025 will render any non-conforming local ordinance null and void. So it's compelled grandfathering? Yes. Nice week.
That's a very short time frame, too. I mean, talking, January 1st is coming up fast and furious. Wow.
Fast and furious. Sounds like a movie.
Anything else?
For note, I may have missed it. Do we have a meeting on October 15? I know that I will not be here, and Commissioner Lepre, you're not here either, so at least two commissioners will be absent.
So that's all from staff. All right, let's move on to the 13.2.1 Special Committee reports. So this evening, in our packet, we have documents that we've previously had for consideration, and so new copies. But tonight, we had another copy of, it's labeled at the title Item XX dot X. And so I'm going to ask.
Yeah, I was going to make a motion to help facilitate the work because to make it, I hope, simple. It is motion that we adopt the report of the special committee dated September the 3rd, 2024, and incorporate the findings of fact would be the background contained therein. Furthermore, that towards the end of the recommended workshops, that the commission, that the committee work with the staff to come up with a date for a first workshop to be held before the end of the year and report back at the next meeting what that date would be. We would furthermore be available to implement the work required to conduct that workshop. That's the motion.
I'm going to second the motion strictly for the point of discussion, Commissioner. And then my main discussion point is, I think I have what you're talking about here. It looks like it's a one-page, but I have to be honest. There have been so many documents, and even in our packet today, Commissioner Carter and I were talking. There's one here dated October 1. I'm not sure who the author was. And I want, I like the simplicity of what you just suggested. The problem is, I'm not sure that I have all of the materials that go along with that to do that.
I'd like to back up a little bit more. So we have a motion in a second. Can we clarify? So we had, it looks to be an identical copy to what was in our packet. It's dated the Item XX dot X.
I have, I have a 13 dot 2 dot 1 Attachment 2, September 3rd. I have an XX dot X, September 3rd. And then I have, I have a 13 dot 2 dot 1, oh, one's an, I guess one's an attachment, one, one's an attachment 2, September 3. So I have these three documents, and then I have just kind of this one.
If staff might.
Commissioner Lepre.
If staff might, the only thing that should be in your packet should be the email from Chair Keeney and her recommended cover letter. And then the document dated September 3rd is the revised memo that was provided to staff from Commissioner Smith and Carter with the subsequent attachments to that, the exhibits. That was the only thing distributed.
Right, so those are the only two that we should discuss. My question for the special committee is, what is the difference between this copy that you provided to us tonight versus the one that was in our packet? Which is, it looks, the first page looks identical, but can you please highlight the differences between the?
Well, I think the, the lack of clarity is because Commissioner Carter, when we were here on an occasion when Commissioner Friend was not present, we didn't expect frankly to go forward. But we went forward and a number of people made suggestions about what they wanted. So Commissioner Carter drafted something, submitted that to the staff, but inadvertently, because what he wanted was just the work product of the two of us. Because after all, that's what was to be presented.
Was that the one dated September 5? Because there was also one dated September 5. I have it here somewhere.
I'll defer to.
Yeah, September 5.
Carter.
I'm not sure. Did you write this one?
Which is the most recent of those documents?
Yeah, from Ryan Carter and Kirk Smith. So I, I have a September 5, two September, a couple of September 3s. Yeah.
I think the one that's Item XXX, I think, was in error. So I think we can just, I don't think that was supposed to be in our, I don't think it was supposed to be up here.
Okay, let's, let's, okay, look at what's before us.
Because it is identical with the exception of, I was looking at it too, with the exception of there's an errors corrected. It's, so there was two 3s in this one.
Oh, okay.
And so that was corrected.
That's what I was looking for. What's the difference?
And so I think this is an older version that was inadvertently.
So we really should, the one we were provided tonight that was not part of the packet, we should disregard. This isn't, so I'm going to write.
Personally, I'm looking at Item 13 dot 2 dot 1 Attachment 2 dated September 3rd. And that might be the one you referenced in your motion, Commissioner. And I, I'll be honest, of everything I've seen and appreciate everyone's effort, with some, just some minor modifications, this has been my, my preference so far, with just a few very, very minor suggestions. And so I'm happy to second the motion. Now my confusion is a little bit less because now I've kind of caught up to where you are. I'm just glad I brought it with me.
But that, yeah, but that document was not in our packet tonight.
But it has been in our packet, right? I mean, it's, in my view, it's under the topic that we have been considering. So the material is the same. I don't know, even if we don't adopt this specific one, why we really couldn't just take the material that's here and use it. So I'm looking at September 3rd submitted, and it was 13 point 2 point 1, and it was Attachment 2.
That's what I was reading from.
And, and I.
And how is that different from what we have?
A couple, in a couple of ways, I, in my view, I thought it was, I thought it was more succinct. And with, it was easier, in my view, it was easier to prioritize. Now, they were bulleted here. The recommendations were bulleted, but I thought it would be very easy. I actually have the numbers written here in terms of priority. Because one of the things I didn't see subsequent to this in the memos that, that we had is, while the topics were out there, the things that we've talked about, there didn't seem to be any organization, and what's an easy thing, a long-term priority or a medium-term priority, and so on and so forth. And Commissioner Lepre, on April 2, I want to say April 2, you couldn't be here because of childcare, and you sent an email, which I have been carrying around with me forever until tonight. And I loved what you wrote in there because I thought you had some very low-hanging fruit items. Get the signage out in front of the districts. Get a web, a simple webpage. There were a number of, I thought, were really great recommendations in that email that somehow I think have kind of gotten, they might be in here, but they're, they're not really like popping. And I think what we could do is say, here's some low-hanging fruit, boom, short-term, and then medium-term. Long-term, I think, is an ordinance change. And I think to support the ordinance change, we have to do what Commissioner Smith has been saying for a long time, and that is, we have to engage the public. We have to have those, those public meetings. And so I kind of, I can see a sequence of how, how those would follow. So in any event.
In your absence for that one meeting, I think I explained why these priorities were set forward. For example, there's been some discussion about whether to have downtown Main Street to be declared another historic district. And our suggestion is, no, you need to do, look at the guidelines first. Why? Because there are a number of business owners who are apprehensive about having it be a district just because they think that the rules are kind of fuzzy, arbitrary, and because they don't really understand even what exists now. So that seemingly needs to come first, and it's been around for 10 years. So that's why, that seemed like the first priority. And.
And that's where you stated it. That was in your original memo. That was your first priority, right?
And so what we're suggesting is to get the ball rolling, we're talking about just one workshop. You get to find out what it's like before the end of the year. And because the staff could express some concerns about the, the labor, we're minimizing it. We'll do it for you. It's a one-page flyer that went out by the staff to have that one workshop that we waited something like six months to have. One page, triple-spaced, we'll give it to you. And we'll come up, we'll coordinate a date compatible with the commission secretary for next, next time. We'll tell you what the date is. And then you've got a chance to hear from the public on that first one. If you don't like what the people have said, or they don't participate, then you're free to, to do whatever you want for the next third or fourth time, or not at all. But that's the reasoning. After all, Commissioner Friend's remarked that when he first proposed this and asked for this outline in September of last year, it had been nine years when the duties described in that resolution from the city council had gone, had been neglected. Now that's 10 years instead of nine years. So what we're proposing is to get the ball going with this adoption of a simple resolution. Thank you.
Through the chair, I'm sorry.
You go ahead.
No, I was, I was just going to ask Commissioner Carter, as another participating member on the special committee, just thoughts.
I definitely, I agree that there's been so many iterations of this memo from, you know, from Commissioner Keeney, from me, from both Kirk and I. You know, recommendations from the chair and from Chair, and from Friend, Michael, that, you know, it's, it's difficult to get everything into, like, we're not going to make everybody happy. And I think that's why Commissioner Smith and I decided just to go back to our original document with this cover letter from the chair, which kind of, you know, is a good outline and gives background to why this all happened. And so, yeah, it's just, it's difficult, you know, I, you know, both of our revisions are gone now. You know, they're, they're lost in the, in the ether. I thought that, I thought they were good, but I understand. But, yeah, so I'm, I'm okay with, I just want something to happen. Because if we keep doing this, you know, it's going to be another year, and we're going to be every couple of weeks up here talking about how to change memos. So I'm in support of just doing something and getting something in the right direction.
I want to take this opportunity to call attention to what I submitted for our previous meeting, just September 17th. So what my attempt was to take information from the, and, you know, forgive me, I'm just going to go with the date September 3rd, 2024, this revised memo that you, the special committee gave to the planning commission, along with comments that everyone has made, including Amy with, you know, extensive revision, and, and Michael Friend's revision of the, an earlier version. What I feel we need to do is summarize for our city council quickly, you know, what we've done. I'm sure that they are well aware of the work of the special committee, but that's, that's, that's our document. So, and that's our work. What we need from the city council is to tell them that we've done this work. And so I quickly gave some background of starting the special committee, the product, the work product of the special committee, and that it's been revised. Then I went to the requirements for the planning commission as stated in our ordinance, and we are to advise them. So that's why I underlined that this is our advice to the city council. And, you know, we talked about how we have both long-term and short-term. So I said aspirational, long-term projects, as well as projects that can be completed in a shorter time. So there I included recommendation number one, which is, and this is language, I think, from the original memo, I think so, systematic examination of the current standards. So I believe that that's, we agree that that is our top priority. And then, because we've had that extensive discussion, and what we need to do is, you know, I realize that there's going to, there's an offer of some volunteer work, but the city still needs to establish that budget for us to do this education project. So that's why I stated it that way under.
And that was a concern to me because we've done an extensive amount of work between the two of us, and we've presided, we give you specific reports as we've went along, as the kind of things we're finding, like when it came to inventories, what was done, and how other people in different jurisdictions throughout the state had adopted ordinances and things of that kind. So it does not, this is not rocket science. It does not take that much time. We had a workshop, the staff put together, that consisted of a one-page notice. At this very hour, down at the end of the street, there was a debate party. I put it on within one week. There's 40 people down there. It only took one notice, one week, and you got 40 people down there. How long does it take to write up a one-page flyer, put it on the calendar, and hear from people? And then we can go forward from there. Otherwise, it would be.
But Kirk, you know, what, what you're talking about, setting up a meeting in, in a private setting versus what is done in the public setting, you know that there are different standards.
And that's why I specifically said.
It doesn't have to be expensive. Please hear me out. It doesn't have to be expensive, but it is an expense that we haven't identified yet in our city budget. So it's imperative that the city council see this, and that's why I want to move this forward, so that they see this, realize the importance, and they, they tell us, okay, here is your budget for a one-page flyer. Or if they have a question from us, what are you talking about? A one-page flyer? And we can give them that information so that they can make the, do the deliberation and commit any funding that is necessary. We, we really, we just can't ask staff just to step up and do things for us.
Madam Chair, if I may.
How much time do you think?
So speaking to the motion that's on the table, and going back to, so this is dated September 12, and I think this is what you're referring, this is what you're referencing right now, because it was the email to Kristen for the September 12 meeting, I think. So I am working it out from the right document. And the first thing I'll say, Commissioner Smith, in support of our motion, that your memo of September 3 is an attachment to this memo, right? So it's, it's Attachment 13 dot 2 dot 1, Attachment 1, from September 12. So leaving that, leaving that memo as an attachment supporting what the chair provided to us, and I have just.
Oh, okay.
And I have just a couple.
Let me get a clarification because I specifically did not attach it because on our last discussion about this, you specifically said that you did not want extensive attachments. I.
Well, I evolved, if I can use that, if I can use that phrase in this political season, I evolved. Because now it kind of makes sense to me, now that, now that I, I think I'd been out of town and didn't get back to this the way. But it, it doesn't matter because you, you've written this, you have this memo that you drafted for us, right, for us to consider, the cover letter. And then they're supporting work from the special committee, and that's what's the September 3 memorandum. And then in your letter, you summarize it, right, recommendation 1, 2, 3. So the only, this looks great. The only suggestion, I'm going to make two suggestions. One, I do think, again, going back to Commissioner Lepre's easy suggestions of like signs outside of historic districts, and maybe a one-page webpage. There is some other low-hanging fruit that I would like to see in this as part of our suggestion. Where am I missing those?
I think you missed that.
Oh, they're down on Recommendation 4. Okay. Okay.
Yeah, those are in Chair Kine's cover letter. She incorporated
Right, 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 right. Okay, so, but what, I'm just wondering then, and maybe not, because we have recommendations 1 through 3, but the first one is a systematic examination of the current standard. To me, that's kind of a, and I made a note, that's kind of a longer term, that's going to take some time to do. Whereas if we go to number 4, and information flyers and signage installed, that strikes me as easier and low-hanging fruit, right? And so I'd kind of like to, I'd like it identified that way. And the stuff that takes longer at the ordinance, that's going to be a long process. And to me, the ordinance is then going to require, in my view, the public meeting, workshop, whatever, you know, how, just as you were describing, Kirk, I think we need to have that to get public input, to drive revision of the ordinance, et cetera. Do you follow what I'm saying? So I'd like, I'd like to see just a little bit of sequencing with this.
Could I ask, could I ask you this? Because I do think fundamentally, the basic concern is you want to hear from the public. We could make all kinds of suggestions. I can tell you that Commissioner Carter and I have thought of lots of them. But they may change based on what we hear from the public. So I think that's fundamental, and I think everyone agreed to that last time when the staff proposed a workshop, because we all said, well, we think we ought to have a lot of publicity about this. Get the word out. So I think that was the consensus we have here. So for these things that you think of as low-hanging fruit, why not include those in the first workshop? Hear from the public rather than use our expertise. Let's hear from the public what they would recommend for these kinds of issues. That's the suggestion. So I think that would address your concern about the low-hanging fruit. It doesn't mean that because you talked about the guidelines later this year, that it means that we're going to come up with recommendations. No, it doesn't. We're just hearing from people, that's all. And I know of nothing in our record that says that what I've just described is a significant or material impact on staff resources. We're talking about one notice and consultation to come up with one date within a three-month period. So I see nothing in the record that says that burdensome. Maybe in the future
To me, it's burdensome. I think you're being really flippant and really diminishing of what needs to go into a public workshop and what you're actually looking for, because you keep saying, let the public come tell us. Well, they're going to have questions. They're going to want answers. There's going to be, I feel like just having, like comparing it to a debate party, it's so different. That's, that's show up somewhere. This is, think about it, be involved, be knowledgeable, let us present some really good quality succinct information. Because you have to remember too, once people come to one, they might not come to the subsequent ones. So if you don't really engage people and have a really cohesive plan for what's going to happen and what your outcomes are going to be, I feel like you can be, number one, wasteful of time and resources, and two, not even really get anything and lose people because they go, I already went to that, I don't need to go anymore in subsequent ones. So I will not be voting for a workshop before the end of the year being the mandated timeline. With regards to the memo, I tend to agree with Commissioner Friend. I agree with Ryan as well. I think, I'd like to just get something to city council. I think you did a nice job. I think you captured everything. Are there formatting and differences that maybe I would make personally? Yes, but I also think it's a wonderful document, and I think it gets our points across, it hits the main points. It does everything that we're looking to do. It gets the communication between the commission and the council rolling. So I would be in favor of, and I don't mind if we add backup documentation, if we think that's helpful. I don't think it hurts anything, but I don't think it's necessarily, like, I could go either way. But I think we send the document that Chair Kine wrote and the memorandum so that they can see the background and see where we go from there, because it does keep the momentum going. It closes out this chapter, so we're not spinning our wheels. Here, it gets them involved and informed in a formal way, because they can watch the meetings and know what we've been talking about, but this is a formal way of them, of us recommending things to them and seeing what their reaction and what their priorities are, so.
I support, I support that. I mean, I really do.
I'd like to have a restatement of the actual motion before us, and let's do an up or down vote on that, because I'm not sure that I captured all the details, so would you mind
Actually, if I before we get to
I just wanted to respond to the idea of being flippant.
Chair Kine, before you do a revision of the motion, staff would just like to maybe chime in on what we would be looking for as direction from planning commission, because you're going to be directing staff to format and finalize the documents to take to council. So when you do that, you should also then disband the special committee, because now their charge has been completed. Just wanted to
Thank you for clarifying that.
My comment about a debate function was not to compare it other than the idea that the notice sent out for a workshop was less than one page. That flyer was triple-spaced, it took up one page. And at that workshop, there was a person to facilitate, but the discussion came from all over the place, including council members and the commission, and the public. I learned from that discussion. So I don't know that, when you describe some kind of structure where people are being directed towards it, no.
A facilitator, things like, you just stated things that, sorry. You just stated things that took time and energy and resources to put together, getting the facilitator, noticing, getting all of the commissioners and council members together. I'd like to be there. I think council might be interested in being there. I just think that by suggesting that we rush this for I don't know why, we could really lose a lot of value in it. That's my, my view of it.
So Commissioner Smith, I think, first of all, I would talk about modifying our motion slightly. Our motion, that I understand, is that we simply adopt the memo drafted September 3, right, 2024. I would offer an amendment to that motion that we, that we also attached, the cover memo is drafted by the chair, and I'm going to use the date of September 12, because I think that's when it was provided to us for the September 12 meeting. That would be an amendment I would make. I won't make that quite yet, but that's kind of where I'm going. And then, specific, I think Commissioner Lepper, what she's trying to say is, to do the workshop properly, there's really a lot that goes into it. It is something, it should be a high priority. I absolutely agree, it should probably be the number, the number one priority, or certainly an item that supports recommendation 1 and recommendation 2. To get to recommendation 1 and recommendation 2, you shouldn't do those without having the public workshop, okay? As far as it just being something we can instantly do, no, I concur with Commissioner Lepper. It requires effort and a little bit of planning and can be done well. And it differs a little bit from, I'm not going to say ad hoc what you did. When people get in, are excited about something, they'll, they'll come and show up, but we're representing the city, we're part of the city government, so we have to be very deliberate in how we approach things, and it has to be planned out. So the only, the only thing I'd like to see added to Commissioner Kine's memo is somewhere in here where we identify the need and think, the value of a hearing from the public on this. And I think that was something that council member, Clarici, I think it was, that was Councilmember Clarici's big thing in our joint workshop. He said, do people even like the historic districts the way we've drawn them, right? He said, we, you know, they were kind of done, but what did the public have to think about it? So I, I think council already knows that we kind of need to engage the public. So I would simply like that one minor change. Based on that then, I would ask you if you would accept a modification of the motion, which would be that we attach to the memo from September 3, the cover memo drafted by the chair from September 12.
Well, if I can respond, what
Could we just have a yes or no? Because honestly, I, I'm not that comfortable with attaching the September 3 memo to the cover letter. The cover letter that, that I would like to send to our city council incorporates what we identified as our priorities in several different discussions. And so it is their responsibility to direct us, you know, we can tell them what we think is important. They can, if they have inquiries or questions, they can come back to us with that for clarifications, but we don't have the authority to move forward on behalf of the city on our own.
I don't think that's what's happening here. I see, allow me to finish.
But let me finish. I don't agree with everything that is in the September 3 memo. I, for one, in particular, I am, I'm not sure that I want to tell the city council that we think we should reestablish the Historic Advisory Committee, which was number five. And, you know, as this stands as the work product, that's great information, but that was work product for this body itself. That's the work of the special commission. Our next step, what we need to transmit to the city council is, you know, based on this work product, what do we want them to know our, our priorities? And so in crafting this letter that I wrote, I felt that I did
Question for the chair then, if I may, because then, because then maybe I missed it. Did we, did this commission, this body, did we deliberate on the September 3 memo? Because I don't know that we did. I think what we've had is a series of cover memos. I don't, I think that's
Well, I don't know that we need to deliberate
No, actually, I think we absolutely do, to your point specifically.
No, no, it's
Madam Chair, let me just finish my point. Madam Chair, please let me finish my point to you, because I'm acknowledging
Okay.
I'm acknowledging that you don't agree with, with priority number five. Okay, so I, but I'm trying to think back, did we, I don't think we had a deliberation on what the, so the charge of the special committee was to bring back to this body for consideration based upon the issue that was raised, and I think, and then we would send, send what we agree on, the body, to the council.
Okay.
And so what I think is missing, in my view it is, I do not think that we deliberate, I'm not disagreeing with you, by the way, on number five. I'm simply saying that what we failed to do, fail is a strong word, but what we haven't done yet and we need to do, is we need to deliberate what the special committee gave to us, and refine, and from that, send that to council.
Okay, you know, and I
That's what we haven't done.
I appreciate that clarification, because
I don't recall doing it. Maybe I was not at that meeting.
And I, I don't know that it was, I didn't feel it was necessary, because we have talked about all the elements in, that's in the September 3 dated final memo, and feeling the energy of the group, and we feel that it's important to move this forward to the city council, then I went ahead and crafted this memo based on that. But this, I feel very strongly, this is the work of the special committee, and it, when it, and it's my understanding that this is now their final draft and will not be further revised, it stands alone, and it's, you know, it is a good supporting document. But this, I don't feel is what we need to send to our city council. What we need to convey to city council is, you know, to tell them that it's based on this, but this is now as, as the group, this is what we have prioritized. And I, you know, I apologize if I didn't get all of the priorities, but this is based on, you know, our notes and revisions that we've all been provided over several months.
I really did feel like you captured the priorities that we ground down to. When I say formatting, I just mean how it's like written out, I think sometimes can be, it just can be a little, like, kind of what Commissioner Friend is describing, could be bulleted differently a little bit to be just a little bit more clear. But I also think it is completely great product. I, like I said, that's more of a personal preference thing than it is a diss on your work or a negative, because I do think it is sufficient to send to city council. I think it's important to, if we wanted to reference, please see enclosed, you know, the backup documentation, because this one is to the planning commission from Ryan and Kirk, so it's not from, from you or showing that you had agreed with this, you know, the progress is shown in our, in your final letter, which I think really does sum up, which, to address Mr. Friend, I feel like we have debated this perhaps not in a one go, but over time, basically since April, since I gave that first email when I couldn't come and you guys sat and did talk about it. So I do think that a sufficient debate and discussion of the outcomes of the committee has happened. Like I said, maybe not, I can't say on August 8, but I will say that I feel like we have molded this over, and that the product that Chair Kine came up with does reflect what we all agreed would be reasonable and valuable to send to city council. Does that make sense?
I guess there's one important correction to make. Commissioner, Chair Kine, you talked about the recommendation number five. We didn't propose making any changes. We literally said, we propose that the, that this proposal be examined in a public workshop period. We made, we took no position on it. We still took no position on it. For your information, Councilmember Clarici said he's opposed to doing that. And on the record, Michael Saragosa has said he's for doing it, and he's running for office. So those are two positions. In addition, what's in the record that we can't take away is the staff said, no matter what you do, what any of us do, they're going to be holding, doing something regarding that subject. So there's going to be discussion on it.
So the, the motion that we have is, exactly, is what?
The motion, the motion on the floor, Madam Chair, if I understand it, was to adopt the memo prepared on September 3. And I seconded that motion. Respectfully, Kirk, I'm probably going to, I guess I could withdraw my, I'll probably vote against that now, and let me explain why. A, I want to move, I want to move something to council. Two, assuming we'll have to have a motion to adopt the memo of September 12, okay?
Is that necessary to me? The special committee's work is the memo?
This is your memo, well, I, I don't want something to go to council that I haven't voted to send to council.
We're not voting to send this to council.
We're voting to send your, your cover letter to council.
No, that's, that's not on the
What, we have to do something.
Okay, let's, let's do this in a stepwise manner.
So let me just, let me just finish my point.
What about this memo?
Yeah, so, so my, here's my thinking. I'm not going to vote to send a September 3 memo. I would vote to send the memo that was given to us on September 12, and I would only, but I would request two changes. I would request that recommendation number four become recommendation number one, recommendation number three become recommendation number two, and then recommendation number one can be number three and recommend, because those are the order, I think, that those really should happen. And, and I think it's necessary. And I like moving recommendation number four up to the front, because it's, it's quick, it's, it's the communication, it's getting information out to the public, it's the, it's again, the low-hanging fruit, and then we can move forward to the, and then the historic inventory, which is one of the big things that we talked about. Well, that should be number two, and three, and four. Then I think we can send this, send this to council, and I think that that results in a, in a very, very good work product, and that would be my motion. And Commissioner Smith, respectfully, I hope that if we get to that point, you would support I think it gets us there.
Or we can just have, we can vote on this, the motion that he has originally, and then move forward with a fresh motion.
Well, that's what I'm, that's what I'm anticipating.
I would prefer a fresh motion instead of
No, 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 absolutely. That's what I'm anticipating.
Then you defeat it, you go on and do what you want to do.
Commissioner Smith would be willing to withdraw his motion, and we could start fresh, and you could basically reiterate what you just said. That would be, I think, the cleanest
Okay, I wanted to let Commissioner Smith, out of respect, let him know if, if the question was called, why I would vote no. Commissioner Smith, you also could, as Commissioner Lepper just suggested, you could withdraw your motion, and then I would make, I would make a motion pretty much like what I just said.
I understand. What you're proposing is that the first item be number four.
What we're proposing is that you withdraw your previous motion.
I'm trying to understand.
Yeah, so in the order, in the order
We have a motion as second.
Or vote on it, or he withdraw, like, you know, I feel like
Let's call the vote.
Well, excuse me, I think he was asking me if I would
Yeah, would you?
Would, and Would, and so.
He wanted to understand what I was saying.
What he just said.
So Kirk, assuming you have, you have the memo that the Chair.
Yes.
Okay, so you see her recommendation number four?
I'm looking.
Well, the reason I want to call the vote is that that's very.
Still amending, remending his motion along.
We're not, I just want to let him know what I was going to propose.
So number four is that you start with the downtown district.
That's the community, that's the improved community knowledge of the historic district.
Okay. So that's going to be done whether we want it or not, because the staff has told you they're going to do it whether you want it or not.
But I think that's the first thing.
So I would agree to that.
Okay. Could I implore you possibly to withdraw your motion?
Withdrawn.
Okay. I'd like, I'd make another motion then. I move that we adopt the memo that was drafted by the Chair. I'm going to use the date of September 12th, because that's the packet it came in.
No, it will be updated, you know, effective our approval.
Well, there was, there was no date on it. There was no date on your memo.
It's clearly labeled draft and.
Right, right, so let me just, let me just finish my motion. I'm in the process of making a motion.
We will have a current date.
So adopt the memo drafted by the Chair with the appropriate formatting as to date, et cetera, with the following changes. Move recommendation number four to recommendation number one. Move recommendation number three to recommendation number two. Move recommendation number one to recommendation number three. And then move recommendation number two to recommendation number four. So simply reordering the recommendations. That's my motion.
I'll second that, and I have one question. Do you think it would be valuable to move number two to number three and number one to number four? Because I do think number three is, I mean, I'm sorry, current number two is actually a little bit more achievable than number one.
Oh.
Interested in that at all?
Okay, so I could not, yes, because I, from where I sit, I'm not sure which one would go, yeah, they're equivalent, yeah.
I think for our work, the importance of the SOI standards might be a little bit higher.
Okay.
You know, just for our review work.
Fair enough.
So if you'd be open to that, I think, I will second your, I second your motion.
You're saying recommendation number one as written becomes number four?
Yeah, they basically get reversed. Four becomes one, three becomes two, two becomes three, one becomes four, would be my recommendation.
Okay, I think I've got it.
Okay, I just think it's a little bit more palatable.
Yep.
Okay.
And I really do think that that gets the intent of what we've all tried to contribute to this. And I think this is really significant for the council and the city.
So please, let's state this one more time, because I've changed the ordering. So the reason these are in the order they are is that they came from the special committee's memo and our discussions. But systematic examination of the current standards for review becomes recommendation. Recommendation, consider revising the current or adopting a new historic district ordinance. Review historic district inventory.
Two.
And then improving community knowledge. So that is a motion made by Chair Friend and a second by Ms. Lepa. So my problem with that is that I feel that before we consider revising the current or adopting a new historic district ordinance, we should go through with our systematic examination of the current standard of review. I actually think that that's very important, because revising or adopting a new historic district, that takes a lot of time. In the meantime, we're still operating under our existing system. And I, you know, I took this to heart. What came out of the original memo is that, you know, it was number one. We haven't had a systematic review, and I think that we all struggle with that. So to me, that still is a very high priority. I appreciate your reordering, especially moving, improving community knowledge up to number one. So I would be much more comfortable doing the community knowledge number one, systematic examination as number two.
Now, inventory, inventory should be number two.
Again, inventory is going to take a lot of time, and in the meantime, we're operating under an existing ordinance that I think we, you know, we would benefit from this systematic review. So the inventory then, to me, again, a very expensive and long-term project, would be number three. And then number four, revising or adopting a new historic district, number four, after we've, you know, we've updated everything we can.
I like Commissioner Lepa's suggestion and order. That's how I, that's how I would like to vote. I would prefer it to be that way.
I appreciate your thought process, but I think you're going more at, like, this is a zero-to-six-month one. But I think actually, this one doesn't have so much of an action item, and so I think it's kind of a nice conclusionary one, to say, here's some actionable, really, action recommendations, followed by, also, we recommend that a continued systematic review of the current standard go on and that budget be established for this. I think that the historic district ordinance, I understand what you're saying, it takes time, but I also see that there is low-hanging fruit in there with small tasks we could complete to harden up our ordinances and our standards and things like that. So I'm personally inclined to leave it reverse order, one, two, three, four, as Commissioner Friend and I proposed. That'd be my preference. Because I also don't think it's going to make a big, big difference. So I think, I'm not, yeah, it's not a hill I'm going to die on, but I also, my preference would be to do, just reverse them, four becomes one, as.
I guess I wanted to ask folks if you weighed in all this discussion about staffing, if we've heard from staff. After all, it was a couple of meetings ago that the staff said they were going to be holding hearings or addressing the subject of having downtown be declared an historic district. So wouldn't it be helpful if we knew? I mean, I've already got the idea that was opposition to creating the commission, the committee in the first place, there was an opposition to having it done early in the year, push it out for six months until after your workshop. But I think we ought to have some information from the staff as to what these resources are, rather than just put it on the council to say, hey, this requires a whole bunch of money and a whole bunch of staffing, and we don't know. There's nothing in the record on that.
I think the council is, when the council receives this, they're going to look at it, and they're going to, they're going to, I'll bet you they're going to pick one thing out of it, and they're going to say, this is important, we can do it. And my guess is, it'll be the community outreach. I really do. I may be surprised if they said no, and I think it's the easiest one out of all of them. So I wouldn't be terribly concerned about it at this point, Kirk. I think, I think this is good, I really do. I have a lot of, I feel warm and fuzzy about this. I think it's good.
Again, let me, in the reordering, I want to make sure I'm clear that this isn't the standing-alone memo. And then what I'm prepared to do is update it and include the latest version in our next packet.
What you would be doing tonight is directing staff to complete the memo to go to City Council. So you, it would end, you guys would be done with it, it would just come to staff.
This would be your document, okay. Staff's document, on behalf of the Planning Commission.
Well, it would be staff's document, it would be the commission's document. We're just going to assist you on making it a formal letter. We'll put the city logo on it. The Chair will sign transmitting it to the council. We're just going to assist you in your letter. But it's not staff's memo, it's the commission's memo.
Okay.
Paul, the question?
So the question is, the, just this memo from.
September 12th.
September 12th, is that right? September 12th, it was.
September 17th, Planning Commission.
It was for our 17th.
I have it attached to an email September.
Yeah, the email was when it was provided to.
Okay, all right.
So it could be incorporated into the.
I know there's some confusion on that, my apologies.
All right, that's how, that's my reference.
Okay.
Which, which document are we talking about? When you, that specific date?
The two-page.
This one in our.
A two-page memo that the Chair drafted.
Actually, it's three, three pages.
A three-page memo, yes, sorry.
The one that was in our packet.
Okay, and so then the motion, then I would like to offer this friendly amendment, that we transmit this to our City Council. I also would like to formally receive and file, as part of this motion, the memorandum from the date of September 3rd from our special committee, and then formally disband that special committee and release them from further duties at this time, as part of this motion to then convey this information on to our City Council.
Let me, as a maker of the motion, let me be clear, understand the motion. The motion is that we are going to direct staff to redraft the memo that, from the September 17th meeting, is that correct? Okay. With the priorities reordered as in the motion. And also receiving and filing the memorandum of September 3, which was also attachment 13 dot 2 dot 1, attachment, item 13 dot 2 dot 1, attachment 1. And to disband the special committee with its work having been completed. Is that, I understand, what, your friendly amendment?
Make this all in one motion.
Okay, I will accept that, a friendly amendment, if the second or the motion.
Yes, I second that motion, amended motion.
Further discussion? All right, thank you.
I think we did well. Painfully, but we did well.
Well, this was all.
Sausage, and making some sausage. We still have to call, we still have to vote, though. Let's not forget to vote.
And, yeah, it, even for staff, working with the special committee, I'm not sure that you'd ever done this before in this situation. So, yeah, it was all-new territory for us. So should we have a roll call vote, please?
All right. Vice Chair Carter.
Aye.
Commissioner Friend.
Yes.
Chair Keeney.
Aye.
Commissioner Lepa.
Aye.
Commissioner Smith.
No.
Fantastic. So staff will now redraft this, will you include it in our next packet or away it goes?
As an FYI for us to see what.
Yeah.
I believe away it goes.
Away it goes. Goodbye.
Other than reordering the recommendations, there's really no material change to it, other than making it look pretty.
Well, it makes, it makes the easy, shorter-term things, brings them up, you know, to the top of the list, as opposed to relying on, you know, the order that I had read in the final memo. So that's fantastic. Thank you all. I, you know, a lot of, we all want to move this forward, it's important to us and to our city, so I look forward to hearing, getting some positive feedback and, from the City Council. I had one other matter for staff, and so I'll just go, I don't know about the rest of you. I've had it up to here with the signs for that new development over off of Clay Street that's, it's on Utah and Constellation, and they put up these little signs, and I've complained, and I know I'm not the only person who's complained, and so they disappear, and then they pop up on the weekends, and, you know, it's all I can, you know, one or two, whatever, but they put them back-to-back, they put them, you know, 20 feet apart, it's ridiculous. So I, what can we do? I have sent an email, I've, you know, got action, I felt really good about it, and here they came back again, like mushrooms.
Well, under the current circumstances, very little staff can do. Staff isn't coming down on weekends and go plugging signs out of the right-of-way.
What about the retirement?
Well, we don't have the staff to do that.
Right.
So I brought it up at our management-level meetings, and so the staff knows if they're driving around, if they see any signs on the right-of-way or stuck to utility poles, we can remove them. We don't have to get permission.
So staff has been removing the developer?
When we see them, but I understand that the signs are going up on the weekends. I don't know if it's Friday evening or early Saturday morning, and then they come down on Sunday, because I hear about these signs, and then I don't see them.
Only because it's on our street.
Do you have any enforcement action regarding someone posting signs like that, as it exists now?
We have lots of enforcement actions, but for something like this, when the signs are there and then they're gone, well, then there's no, there's nothing to enforce.
Except that, except that it's a reoccurring thing, and it's done by the people who are developing the property. So can't you direct your attention to them?
I know staff has talked with the development. I know.
And what was the answer?
Director Rivas has told them where they can and cannot place the signs.
And so what was their answer to your inquiry?
They'll remove them.
Pardon?
That they will remove them.
Okay, so the best thing we can do is just continue to take.
They keep doing it.
To document it and tell staff.
Well, it just raises the fairness issue, that some people get, you know, consideration one way, other folks get consideration.
No, there's no consideration here. We're not biased on these signs. It's just these signs are coming up over the weekend, they're come down over the weekend. What is it you're suggesting? You want staff to come down over the weekend, then, and remove the signs?
No, direct, the suggestion is, you direct the company that you've communicated with, and you do it one more time, and you will get fines.
Well, unfortunately, it goes.
If the signs are gone, we can't find them.
That's not in the ordinance.
And it also goes to the property on which the sign sits. And so it wouldn't be necessarily the development company, it would be the property owner, which is how we enforce signs.
Well, the property owner, which property owner, are you talking about where the sign is?
It's in the public right-of-way.
Sometimes if they're on the public right-of-way, then we have the ability, staff can remove them.
The concern is with, with the developer that's putting the signs out, am I correct?
In the public right-of-way. I don't care, if they have the private property owner's permission, I could care less. They're ugly-ing up all the planting that we have there around that park and ride, and, you know, it looks really good.
We understand, and staff would recommend if Commissioner Smith wants to meet with staff offline, happy to do so. I don't want to carry on this conversation any longer.
Well, thank you for telling me, you're doing everything you can in taking my complaints seriously, so I don't expect any improvement, but just wanted to hear what had been done. Anything, any other matters from planning commissioners?
No, except to say that the mattress store has my ire of your guys' signs for it.
We are working with them.
I know you've talked to me about it before, but every time I drive by, it really, it's just so ugly, and the writing, you're coming to town, and it just.
His permit was issued this week.
Okay, so.
That makes you feel better.
Yes.
He will be removing those banners.
Okay, cool.
Having permitted signage, hopefully, in the near future.
Okay, great, that's actually great news. Like I said, it's just the, like, it's jarring right there, so thank you for working on that, I really do appreciate it.
Okay, fantastic, thank you, everyone. It's 8:08, and we stand adjourned until October 15th.